But there's only three of us.
for the zoning board of adjustments. This is for our 418 2023 meeting. We have two cases before us. We only have three members.
Four.
Okay. And then.
Hopefully we get our fifth.
Kevin's on the way in too.
Oh, good.
Oh, Kevin's here, okay.
Kevin's over there.
That would be good. So that will give us five. Okay, we'll hold for a second on.
Where's Bonnie?
Haven't heard from her.
No. I saw her at the post office last week and she said not coming here.
Something must have come up.
She was in there, so. What was Kevin talking to Scott?
Well, no, he probably went in the bathroom or something, because he was, he was, he came in the building a few seconds before me, but I'd lost track of him.
Oh, he'll be alone.
I got hot all of a sudden.
Which one's the first one? What's the first case?
What's that?
What's the first case?
Twenty-three zero zero two.
Which one?
Twenty-three zero zero two.
Hoodlett.
Yeah.
Nice, yep. Perfect, thank you.
Hi, Kevin.
There he is, right there.
Good to see you, Kevin.
Good to see you too.
You know, we've been so far in between meetings, it's like.
Us then. Then.
Okay.
And that's.
Well, let Kevin sit down, get comfortable. We've opened the meeting, but we haven't started anything yet. Okay, so, um, we got election offices on the front, on top and the box. She's got it up here.
Okay.
We'll move it around.
Fine.
Do you want to move it anymore?
Nope, it's totally fine.
Okay.
Yeah, let's hear the cases first in the last class.
Yeah, we'll do this afterward. No, that's what we were gonna do. I was looking for it at the bottom, but I didn't see it. Okay, so we're gonna open up our case for our public hearing. This is case twenty-three zero zero two VA Hoodlett, Seven O'Brien Way. Application from Keith and Sarah Hoodlett requesting a variance from Article Two, Section C three A of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the installation of a ground sole amount eleven point two four feet from the side property setback and fifteen point eight eight feet from the road front. The ordinance states that the setback between the side and the property line and accessory use buildings for non-conforming lots in the residential zone shall be twenty feet and the setback between the lot frontage and the accessory use building for non-conforming lots shall be twenty feet. The property is located at Seven O'Brien Way in Nottingham, New Hampshire and is identified as tax map fifty-five lot three dash twenty-eight. Do we have anybody? Oh, you're right, okay. Come up, you can come up and state your name and.
My name is Sarah Hoodlett. I live at Seven O'Brien Way. I'm representing myself on this case.
Okay, so it's just you?
Yep.
Okay, you can go over, over your application, go over your five criteria, you can read them and.
Sure.
If we have any questions, we'll ask.
Sure. So, thank you for summarizing the, the application. So, I don't have the actual application in front of me. I do have the supplemental information that I provided to you guys. So I'll review that really quickly. In terms of question one, granting the variance should not be contrary to the public interest. There's no trees or vegetation being removed for this project. It's all frontage, so there shouldn't be any visual changes, which is a benefit. And our property is at the end of a cul-de-sac, off cul-de-sac, so it's very limited traffic. The people that would see it are the five, including us, people that live at the end of that cul-de-sac, so there shouldn't be any public interest constraints there. If the variance was granted, the spirit would not be changed of the ordinance, because while what we're requesting is within twenty feet of the required setback, the neighboring homes on the end of the cul-de-sac, other than ours, are setback, are pretty far away from the house, from the proposed location of the array. The nearest home to it would be, which is on the southwestern side of the property. It's four hundred and fifty feet back from the road and there's a good buffer between where that house is and the proposed array location. It's also uphill, so they would be looking down on it anyway if they could see it, but they, maybe in the winter, they could see the backside of it, but it's in the summer, it's so, there's so much forest that you wouldn't be able to see it. The roadway is downhill from the south, the roadway is downhill from their proposed location, so there shouldn't be any drainage issues associated with the installation. There is, I think there's a small drainage ditch in the area, but it's all downhill from where that would be. And it's a relatively steep hill, so there really isn't anything we can do with it, other than letting it grow crabgrass, which does very well. So that's one of the things there. Also, under, well, item B, actually, an exception can be granted so long as the goal set forth in the RSA is not infringed by granting the special exception. So under the RSA, I checked that out. Every zoning ordinance shall be adopted in accordance with the requirements to encourage the installation of solar, wind, and other renewable energy. Knowing that, I think that's kind of aligned, kind of aligned with that RSA, at least that part of the RSA. Any questions so far? I'm just kind of reading through what I've got here. You have it in front of you, but just kind of walking through the high points.
Quick question on some of the pictures that you've submitted.
Yep.
There's a picture with a mailbox in front of the property.
That's ours.
And directly in back of the mailbox seems to be a clear area. Is that the area where you're gonna make the installation?
Yep.
Is it a movable installation that follows and tracks the sun, or is it a fixed installation?
It's a mobile. It'll be a ground-mounted, mobile, facing south, essentially.
But, but it's not gonna move?
No.
Okay. Is it gonna be like several arrays?
Nope, it's one line, so there's four ground mounts that would be mounted. I'm assuming they're gonna be, have to be bedrock implanted, because there's probably not much soil there. There'll be four in a line. They're four and a, four point two five feet square, so they'll be four wide, so it's about seventeen and a half feet long.
Okay.
And four and a half feet wide or so.
Right, thank you.
Yep. Item number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice, because the solar array that we're proposing would essentially offset our house's electricity by almost a hundred percent, which is great. This will allow our house to be powered by renewable energy and reducing the amount of impacts to the climate in the region, which I know is a master plan item for the town of Nottingham, just because it's a smaller community and there's a lot of people that travel. So, you know, having a lower impact with, with using renewable energy is in line with the Nottingham master plan as well. The area that you see in the photos there, it gets sun all year long. It's always the first thing to thaw out in the, in the spring, even after we had thirteen inches of snow. I think we had grass there in like four days, so it gets a lot of sun. But in addition to that, you know, because it gets a lot of sun, there's not a lot that can grow there, even grass. So, one of the fringe benefits, I guess, of having a solar is that it would provide some ground shade to the area, which would benefit some of the pollinators, you know, wild grasses could grow and they could flower and they could provide more of a habitat that's useful, rather than just kind of a warm, hot area that doesn't get any shade. So that's obviously not a direct impact. It's a secondary impact in benefit to that.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, you're done with that section. Yeah, you said you, you would get almost a hundred percent with that. I mean, it's only four by, four and a half by, say, four and a half by eighteen or something like that, but I mean, if you figure it out, it doesn't really, I don't think you're gonna produce a hundred percent.
According to Granite State Solar's calculations, which I don't have in front of me, I apologize, but it was, should have been in their original application to the town. They, they estimated, they, they based off of your previous year's electric use and they, you know, they calculate that. And they said it would be almost a hundred percent, ninety to a hundred percent of our offset would be taken.
Right, because I mean, you're gonna produce, I mean, it produces like twenty watts per square foot and usually it's like a five-hour average per, you know, five-hour average for that, for the peak of twenty, so you're gonna produce, you know, maybe two hundred and twenty-five, two, two hundred and twenty-five watts per, per day, and then you take that, and so you're gonna end up with like, a normal house in New Hampshire is like six hundred and fifty kilowatt per, per month and you're gonna, and you're gonna have two twenty-five, so you're gonna be about a third of what the average house, that's just what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak to that. I didn't do the calculation.
I mean, a lot of these companies will tell you a lot of stuff.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure.
I'm not convinced you're gonna get quite as, quite as much. You know, you might have to expand that thing quite a bit.
Yeah, we don't plan to expand it. I mean, we're gonna put it in and whatever we get is what we get. We're hoping that it's close to not even a hundred percent. Obviously, it will depend on the day and all that, but hopefully it'll be higher than thirty percent, so.
Okay, you can, you can continue.
Okay.
Go ahead.
If the variance is granted, the values of the surrounding properties wouldn't be, wouldn't be diminished, because a property improvement in general like this is more likely to increase the value of the home than decrease it, which is not, obviously, there's no set basis there other than just hearsay. But by association, if our property goes up, typically neighboring properties also go up, just by association there. Furthermore, the proposed array is not within direct line of sight of any homes. There's all, there's, there's trees along every area that we have any kind of access to it or view of it, so there really isn't any direct line of sight from homes. So that shouldn't have any impact to their property value. We'll see when they drive by, but from their house, they won't. At least in the summertime, they won't see it. Maybe in the winter, there'll be a little bit more, because there's leaf off, is obviously see more with leaf off, but. And unnecessary hardship, so obviously granting this variance, whether it's approved or denied, it really shouldn't impact our hardship. Obviously, you know, we'd like to have it approved. It should not impact the town's ability to maintain the roadway. It's, it's, like I said, it's pretty far up the hill there, so that shouldn't be any issue there with both plowing, maintaining, or drainage for that area. It shouldn't impact neighboring properties either. Like I said, the area, the closest neighbor is kind of up the hill and back behind some pretty thick vegetation and that area for them, new roads also not usable. I think they brush hog it like four times a year, because it's the same situation as ours. As I mentioned before, the location of it is unusable, so the solar array is only designed for our residential use. So it shouldn't alter the property's use or anything like that and shouldn't, shouldn't go against the residential agricultural district's bylaws. It also supports the master plan's goal to reduce reliance of fossil fuels. I don't see any for any issues or community hardships by either approving or denying the application, or the variance, rather. An approval shouldn't risk the impact that's around the physical property and a town will have access to the roadway. Like I mentioned, with a denial, we probably will end up, we probably will still end up moving forward with it. The biggest hardship I can see on that end is that if we, so we can do it without having the variance, but it would move it farther up the hill, which would put it underneath some pretty large oak trees and maple trees that we don't want to get cut down, because it's like sometimes those branches can fall. We don't want that to fall on the solar array panels, obviously. And then by moving it over closer to the driveway, it removes our access from the road to avoid our leach field, which is right in front of our house. So if you move the solar array over, you remove our access point. That essentially negates going either over to leach field or up around the house to the, to the east, which is where our well is, our wellhead is. And we don't wanna obviously have to have that risk factor for either of those things. So obviously, that's a hardship for us personally. It's obviously, but other than that, I don't see any other hardship from this application. So that's really the summary of what I have proposed here. There's an associated map and some photos, like Mr. Denia said. If you have any other questions, I'm here for them.
No, I mean, you did a very nice job presenting. I mean, you did a very nice job with all the pictures. I mean, I did go over a look and, you know, you got an acre and a quarter and you're trying to fit something that's four and, you know, four and a half feet by, say, seventeen wide. And I, I, I don't really think it needs, I think you could find room for that someplace within the twenty-foot setback, but that's just my personal opinion. But, because, you know, over by the mailbox, when you look at the Google picture over that area behind that granite post, you can almost get your twenty feet there and you can, you could push back. I mean, yeah, those trees are nice, but, you know, maybe you'd have to take two trees down. And I don't think your access, you could go up the driveway and cut around that leach field, so I don't think it's gonna cut your access off. So I think, you know, it could fit right in that area, right behind that granite post, and I, I think you could get twenty, like twenty, twenty feet off the road and twenty feet from the line, so.
The, the issue with the access is that it's not at the granite post. I don't have a good photo of it here. The access, it's behind that granite post, but the actual array, in order to fit within the easement or within the requirement set forth in the ordinance, it would need to be shifted over so that it's essentially directly in the middle of that access between two trees. And we would have to, we don't wanna remove the trees. Obviously, it's carbon footprint. We'd rather not have to remove trees if we don't have to. But, I mean, we, we can fit it there. We prefer not to, because we understand that, you know, obviously, we don't wanna remove trees and we, we feel that it's, it doesn't necessarily have any negative impact. I, personally, I don't think, but I mean, obviously, we're here for, for you guys, so, but that's just my opinion. It would, it would block off, there's currently an opening. You can kind of see in this, in the picture with.
Yeah, between the two trees, but.
Yeah, it's between two trees there and it's about ten feet wide, so it's enough to get any kind of backhoe, right? We actually had a generator put in, so they brought in a backhoe and did a trench there for us. But they have to skirt around the edge of that stone wall and then up around, but that's the only way we can get equipment up there. Otherwise, you have to cut across the yard over the driveway.
Right, I mean, but they could come up, none of that looks too steep, really. I mean, how about on the roof? You don't wanna put it on the roof?
It only gave us about twenty percent offset. Putting it on the roof.
It does what?
It only gave us about twenty percent offset on the roof.
I mean, because it's.
And the roof's not, it's not, there's not enough, there's not enough south-facing surface of the roof to make it viable.
Okay.
That was the first thing we checked.
Like in the back of the driveway, is that too, is your line too?
We looked there as well. The issue with that is that there are more trees kind of out of, outside of the picture. You can kind of see them on the next, on the second page of pictures, figures three and four. There's more trees on that side of the house, of the property, which provide more shade to the area, so it's not, it doesn't get as much sun as the front of the house. But we did look at that as well.
Okay, any other questions, anybody?
I, I kind of wish you had put in a little box of where exactly you were putting it on your pictures.
Well, it shows somewhat in this.
Somewhat in there.
But you could see.
But on these right here would have been great to be able to see where you were putting it.
I apologize, I should have thought of that. I did it myself, so. Essentially, what we're looking at is, if I, if I recall the application from Granite State Solar, the center point is basically, there's four trees that are along the, the rock wall there. The center point, I believe, is the third one in from the driveway, second one in from the left.
So it hangs more the other way, rather than towards the driveway? Correct?
Well, it's hard to tell in the photos. Let me just see here. I believe the center point, what they, what they, what they did for us is they, they made the solar array start at the end of that rock wall. And it's seventeen feet from the end of that rock wall over to the west, southwest. So from the driveway, starting in the driveway, there's about a ten-foot gap between, between the trees, essentially. And on that second tree is basically where the stone wall starts.
Okay.
That's where the start, start of the, of the solar array will begin, and then it will continue southwest along the stone wall.
Towards your neighbors.
For the neighbor, yep, which is the eleven and, eleven and a half. Was it eleven and a half? Yeah, eleven point two five feet back from the property line. And it's kind of a funky shape parcel there. Kind of like a, like a pentagon, kind of.
It is, right.
Was it mentioned how, how much carbon offset this would provide? I'm sure they're gonna say it most, but.
I didn't include any of that. It probably is in the information that Granite State Solar had. But I don't have that information off the top of my head. I can get it to you.
That's okay.
No, that's okay, because we're really, our issue is your setbacks.
Yeah.
Nothing else matters in the case.
Yeah, yeah, just curiosity.
Just curiosity.
Is there anybody objecting to this?
Not that I'm aware of.
No neighbors here?
My neighbor texted me, just curiosity, but other than that, nothing.
Okay, anybody, any other questions?
I, I just, one thought that I only is a snow impact. I mean, we potentially could have quite a bit of snow and it seems, just from the overhead view, it seems like it's really close to your driveway and then it's not really that far off of the road. Did you get a good visual this year by the snow, by pushing the snow, if it would impact at all?
I don't think it will impact the, the snow plowing at all. And it does look like it's close to the driveway. It's, it's about, at that location, it's about ten or twelve feet away from the driveway, so it really, really shouldn't have any impact to our ability to pile the driveway. And like I said, it's about, well, it's fifteen point eight feet back from the edge of the easement, which is farther inch, off the road than, it's not, like, the road is not that wide. So I think the easement is a little bit farther up the, the hill than is the fifteen point eight feet.
So I was just thinking too of potential damage to that solar array for you guys as well.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't expect there to be, we'd have to get, we'd have to get like buffalo-style snow, I think, to make it be a problem. But yeah.
So you had a good idea of where it was gonna be?
Yeah, I don't think there'll be.
This winter that you saw?
Yeah, I don't think there'll be much of an issue. And it's, I mean, it doesn't look very steep, but I think you guys were there this past weekend and there was, it's pretty steep.
It is, yeah.
Um, I don't, I think you have to have lost snow to have a power up that high.
I actually said to Kathy on our way back down, I said, I almost said to her husband, "Slow down. I'm not as young as you are going up this hill."
He's got bad knees too, so.
He was practically running up that hill. He did good.
Don't climb hills like that every day.
Okay. Chair, I'm just gonna interrupt for a minute. Do I need to be seated?
Yep, yep, you should be seated.
So before I talk, I probably should be seated.
You, you can talk, you just can't vote until you're seated.
I think we went through that last year.
So at the right time. So what really matters to the board? There's a setback between the side property line, there's a setback to the front of the road. It's probably the side property that's more important to the board than, than to the road, perhaps.
But both, both are outside the ordinance, because it's twenty feet.
Oh, I understand.
Okay.
What would take precedence?
Oh, gotcha.
So I'm just trying to, just sort of state some facts.
Gotcha.
If you had a choice, which one would take a higher priority? So it's setback to the, to the, to the adjacent property.
To the neighbor.
I assume, I think I heard there's no, no butters here.
Correct.
So, so that may, may not be a concern to the present butters, but it's up to us to look forward to future butters. So I just want to be just a little clear. So the, it's, let me see, eleven feet from the side property. Where would this be if it was twenty feet from the side property and still fifteen from the road? And I just, I just wanna, I think I heard an answer, but I might not have heard the answer. Does that mean it would, from picture?
Picture three is probably the best.
Does that mean it would shift to the left?
So if you're looking at.
Shift to the right?
If you look at photo three, that's the most, that's like directly facing it, it would shift to the right.
It would shift to the right, closer to your driveway?
Correct.
Understood. And that means it would need to shift approximately nine feet, roughly? And, and the edge of it now is how close to the driveway? I think you said an answer.
So it's currently aligned with the end of our, it's, I would have to estimate fifteen feet, maybe, from the edge of the driveway?
So if we moved it nine, it would then be six feet from the edge of the driveway?
Six feet from driveway.
Okay, which is, to your point, a little close.
It doesn't look that close on the. Go ahead.
No, I better let you, you're the chair.
Oh, no, I, I was just trying to say, according to that, if you look at the drawing, you go in and look at that first drawing here, this one with the lots.
That little blue thing?
The little blue thing is it. That's what they have.
That's the solar.
The little blue thing.
It's kind of hard to see.
It doesn't, in that, where that is, it doesn't, it looks.
It looks really good there.
It looks quite away from the driveway, really.
Yes, it does.
So that's why, if it shifted over and as it shifts, if it shifts back and over, I mean, the line, that sideline goes away. So it's, if the thing pushed back a little bit more, it would even help push it away from that sideline more, so, but, you know.
If, if I, I don't wanna interrupt, so.
So what you're saying, Terry, is that if the fifteen was maybe extended to twenty?
Yeah.
Then it, then the six may not be six, it may be eight or nine or ten.
Yeah, I don't think it would be as close to that driveway. They seem to have it over, because they wanna keep that opening. That opening's gotta be at least, that opening's gotta be at least ten feet wide. And if you look at that last tree down to their driveway, it's a reasonable distance.
There's also a irrigated flower bed there that we'd rather not have to disturb, if we don't have to. Not that that makes much of a difference to you guys, but for us, it'll make a difference.
I, I think what would have been helpful for me, when we went out to see it, was to have that area
staked.
staked out, because I, he's like, up the hill, it's gonna be here, it's gonna be here, it's like there. It was very difficult to see. It was very difficult to see exactly where you plan to put it, and that is what makes it difficult for me
True.
to see, is that really the best place, or could we shift it some and have you more within your boundary lines? Because although your current abutters don't have an issue with it, a future abutter may have an issue with it. And although we don't want to say no to solar, if we don't have to, it's, we also don't want to infringe on other people's properties if we don't have to.
Sure.
Is the.
It is on our property, just within the easement, within the acquired setback.
Right, and setbacks have been adjusted multiple times for conforming and non-conforming lots. And they're there for a reason.
Of course, yeah.
So.
Yeah, I understand that, for sure.
Would you consider, um, staking out where you want it with four stakes? And then staking out a, the corner that meets the twenty by twenty and staking out where that would be?
Uh, if that would help the board to visualize and maybe do a site visit, that I could have Granite State Solar come and do that for us.
Help the board make a decision?
It, it would have made a big difference to me, yes.
I, I think we can make a decision, I, I can make a decision from what I'm seeing right now.
Understood.
Okay, what's the?
The, the, the impact of that is a month delay-ish. Is that correct? And is that acceptable?
At this time, we are waiting on this day, um, and they expect it to be done by the end of September. So we do have some time. I'd rather not wait a few months, but one month shouldn't be too much of an issue.
We're bound by law to. We're bound by law to take.
Oh, I know, yeah, I know, I'm just saying. We, we have plenty of time, which is why we, I would have done it last month, but.
No, but what I'm saying is we can't delay and delay and delay by law. We can't do that, so. No worries there.
Okay, okay, I'm understood.
Yes.
Kevin, are you making a motion?
He's gotta be seated.
I'll seat, I'll seat.
Bonnie?
What I'm trying to do is feel out the board if, if it's, if it's worth making a motion to, to propose. And do a, do a site visit with other, with, with marks.
Romeo's asked that, would you rather have to see it marked or, or vote tonight?
I'm ready to vote.
I have an idea where it's going. I'm, I'm pretty comfortable what, where I know where it's going, so. I mean, you can make a motion and.
Well, are we going around and see if we want it?
I'm good.
Okay.
So let's just move to, to vote.
So, um.
We don't need to delay. Three of five are, are cool.
Sign me in.
You did.
You're in, you're in, you're in for Bonnie.
He did already.
Bonnie's, uh.
Fast.
All right.
All right, Romeo, go for it.
I'm making a motion.
Well, we gotta close the, the hearing, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a mo, um, I'm just gonna close the hearing.
Well, there's, because there's nobody to speak, so I guess.
Yeah, I didn't do this part at all, but, um, so I'm just gonna, um, close the hearing to the public and then we'll open it up for our discussion.
I don't think there's anything more.
Okay, so it's closed.
Motion made to approve case twenty-three dash zero zero two, Udllet seven, O'Brien Way, Nottingham, as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. So this would be for the setback, as it was read, for the side setback of eleven point two-four and the front setback of fifteen point eight-eight for the road front. So that's the motion. Okay, all those in favor? Anyone saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Sustained.
Obstaining.
Okay. Okay, so it's four, four, four.
Four zero one.
Four zero one.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, you, you know you. Do, do you have to read that one month?
Oh, yeah, you have thirty days, but you say you're not gonna be ready till September anyways.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll respond to Granite State Solar tomorrow, I'll let them know that we have approval, but they, they have to get reparts still and all that, so I don't think it'll happen till the summer or the earliest for me.
So if there's any neighbors in front of your house protesting tomorrow or something. You've got thirty days to wait, you don't.
Have cocktail parties.
It's a party, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so now I'm gonna, the meeting's over, I'm gonna open up our next case. This is case twenty-three zero zero three VA. This is an application from Zachary and Christine Cody requesting a variance from Article Two, Section C Three of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the building of an unattached garage. The proposed accessory structure would be two point five feet from the property line, where the zoning ordinance states a setback between the property line and accessory buildings should be twenty feet. The property is located at one sixty-five Stage Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as tax map number thirty-seven, lot number eighteen. Okay, who's that?
My name is Zachary Cody. My, my wife Kristen and I own one sixty-five Stage Road. She was unable to make it tonight. We're here asking for a variance to build a detached twenty-four by thirty-two foot garage with a two and a half foot setback where a twenty foot setback is needed. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, because adding a garage would allow us to get rid of our forty foot storage container. This would make the property more visually appealing. If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed, because the garage would provide a southern neighbor's privacy between our backyards. The abutters would not be affected. Granting the variance would do substantial justice, because the garage would allow more room for storage, as we do not have a basement. Our house sits on piers. This would decrease yard clutter and increase curb appeal. If the variance is granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished, because although the garage would be close to the property line, there is a natural tree line that separates our property from our southern abutters. The garage would be on our side of the tree line and have no effect on them. Unnecessary hardship. We do not have a basement, and there is no other location to put a garage without encroaching on a setback due to the location of our well in the front yard, wetlands in the side yard, septic and leach field in the backyard. The ideal location for the garage would be the back of our driveway. Additionally, we had the property surveyed after purchasing and found out that the property line previously being used for the past twenty years was fifteen feet off of what we had thought it was.
Is that where the board fence is?
Uh, there is our fence that we put up, and then there's a fence that was there when we had bought the, the house.
Like, you're showing your diagram, board fence.
Uh, yep, board fence, yes, that is correct, that's.
So that's what you thought?
That's what we thought, and we thought it went straight back at that angle until we had it surveyed. And in fact, yeah, the, the propane, we contacted Eastern Propane, because there was a propane tank there that was used for the house. And Eastern Propane has dates putting it in the neighbor's property, which they didn't know it was for the past twenty years. The propane tank was along the fence line. Yeah, that's all I have.
If you, uh, when you buy a property, you can ask for an ALTA, Title Insurance Policy with a survey. Generally, you can get the seller to pay for it.
Okay.
And if you had done that, you would know
Yeah.
what the boundaries were before you moved.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying.
That's good for the, yeah, in the future.
Good for the future.
My insight is twenty twenty.
The next time you buy. Okay. So any questions, any?
Yeah, you guys came out and saw it.
Yeah, we all came.
You two have any?
I'll see Romeo, sorry.
Yeah, Romeo, I see.
Oh, you didn't see it, okay, because you were talking about the fence, I thought you were talking.
Just on the, uh, survey.
Yeah, I saw the survey, I see it there, yep. Yeah, I mean, I went over and, and you, you know, your well is right out in the front. And like you, you did say to me that you've had two cars come off that corner and through your front yard.
Yeah.
You don't really wanna.
I don't want the garage in the front yard.
Out in the front pot, so, and your well is right there. Now, you do have the wetlands. But that stone wall is there, and the wetlands are kind of.
Yeah, I kind of drew.
Probably ten feet in from that stone. It would have been nice if you had thrown the wetlands over.
Yeah, Peter doesn't do wetland surveys, but right along, this is where, I guess. This is the wetlands, and my fence on the backside of my, or the side of my property runs along the wetlands.
Okay, so this is all wet, right?
Yeah, this is all wetlands, and out back is all wetlands as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wetlands, proposed garage. Well.
He actually, um, Kevin, he actually had it facing as if you were looking at his property. That's why he had it the other way, the one that's in the book, although it shows this, it's, this is as you go in.
Understood.
Okay.
Yeah, as I was saying, you know, you know, two and a half feet is pretty tight, because I, you know, I like to you know, see that you can actually walk by your building without being on the other guy's land, and you can put a ladder up without having it on the other guy's land. That's the.
Absolutely.
Two and a half is, is tight. I mean, you could, I know you don't have, because the leach field does kind of, you could encroach over a little bit, but the trouble is, if you shift it over, then you're gonna, if you want two-car garage, you're gonna end up with the doors kind of behind your house.
Yeah.
I mean, you could, you could turn it, but then your, your wetlands are all that far away on this side, so you're not gonna be. I mean, it looks like a big lot, and you know, you got one point nine acres, but, um, I know you had said you could maybe get, you know, five feet or, or something at least, but.
Yeah, so the two and a half feet is all, that's on just the back corner.
Right.
The front corner, because the property line is angled compared to the driveway, the front corner is a four and a half foot setback. And it, you know, it slowly gradually decreases as you get to the back of the proposed garage.
That's because, I mean, you've done a very nice job on the house, you know.
Yeah, thank you.
I've watched your progress over the year and.
Yeah, it's been, yeah, two and a half years. That's been tough, you know, storing all the tools in the shipping container versus, you know, in a garage, so.
Probably safer there, though, for.
Yes, definitely.
When you weren't on the property.
Yes.
Okay, is there any questions, any?
Yeah, um, why are you angling the garage itself in, in non, non-parallel line with the property line? You're going from four and a half to two and a half. Could you go four and a half all the way back and scoot the garage in a little? I mean.
Yeah, so then that, that opposite back corner would be.
In the wetlands?
Uh, it would be clo, pretty much closer to the leach field.
Oh.
I looked over the fence, and I didn't think, you know, you gotta, you got the leach field, you got a slope, you know, two and a half feet pushing over to that leach field. That's not much. I don't think you'd run into a real problem.
Just two, it'd just be two feet.
Well, no, well, I'm just saying if you wanted to get five feet, even if he would.
Oh.
Yeah, so then the garage would be.
Canid a little.
It would be canid compared to the house in the driveway.
Right, but it's crooked to the driveway now, I mean, it's gonna be a little more, but I mean.
A little bit crooked to the house now.
It's crooked to the house too, so.
Yeah, I tried compromising halfway between the property line and eating into my yard and.
I mean, the nice way would be to have it right on the back of the house with the doors on the, you know, driveway side and, you know, but you got the leach field, you got your septic tank right there where you showed me, you got that pipe that comes out, you know, your pipe that comes out, you don't have a cellar, so it just comes out, so it's not a lot of, you know, so even if you put it over there, you know, you'd be running over that pipe. I understand, you know, you are pushed over into that corner.
Didn't, we talked about you possibly decreasing the width, going longer in the length.
Yes, I would be willing to do that.
Decreasing the width of the garage?
Correct, and going longer, because he's not looking to make it a two-car garage, right? Didn't you say?
Yeah, I was, it was gonna have a one door anyways.
Oh, you always have one door?
Yeah.
Okay, like the car in that garage and that car and a half.
Yeah, thirty-two feet's pretty deep for a garage. Usually it's twenty-four.
Does it have to be?
No, usually it's, the depth is twenty-four.
Well, usually, twenty-four is a pretty, yeah, kind of a shallow, right? Twenty-eight is usually.
Whatever. But thirty-two feet's much deeper, that's fine, that's good.
Yeah, no, but he could go even more.
Yeah, a workbench, et cetera.
Well, and he's looking forward to be a storage.
I did, I did calculate the setbacks, if I were to make the garage twenty-five by thirty-six feet.
Yeah.
Or make it twenty feet by thirty-six feet and hold this line on the inside of my property, then the forward setback corner would be eight and a half feet and the aft corner would be five feet.
Right, can I see that too?
Uh, Terry, question. Is there, is there a state requirement from leach field to a building?
With the what?
Leach field.
Oh, is there a leach field require? I think.
Cause like you say.
It's usually, like, there's no.
How, how close can you get?
I think it could be five feet. The tank could be five feet, because it's only a slab.
If I have to redo my septic design, if my septic fails in the future, would, it would, would it be in the same footprint, or would they require it to be?
That's the same question I'm asking.
You'd probably be, let me see.
And he would know.
Let me look up.
He's the man, yeah.
Let me see the distance on the, uh, setback.
We have made, I'll say concessions in the past for requirements to allow what Terry was talking about, where there's enough room for a ladder and essentially shoulder width around buildings and structures, um, up the property lines.
Excuse me a minute.
When our feet won't quite, quite cut that. Not a precedence or anything like that, but we have done that in the past.
Does it become a liability, though, for the neighbor? Should something happen?
Not that I know of, but.
It's only gonna be five feet from the bed, because it's only a slab. You know, if you were putting in a full cellar, you know, it would be, you know, maybe fifteen feet. But it says in the, oh, let's see. Foundation slab. I mean, you're gonna put it in a wall, it's still gonna be a slab.
Yeah, it's gonna be a slab. It won't be a foundation.
Then I get the basement.
Yeah.
And then, so it says, foundation with slab, foundation, five feet from the tank, five feet from the bed. So, yeah, you could shift, you could shift into that. Cause that, that's probably an older, right now, they're down to three feet from the, the slope. You know, you gotta be in three feet, and that one's probably older, so it's probably five feet. So the actual bed's probably in further from that slope. I don't think you would have trouble shifting, I think you would be fine on the five foot. Yeah, I don't think you'd have problem there. And then you, you know, at least get that, what was your proposal, it was gonna be?
Twenty feet by thirty, I was adding four feet on the back.
Right.
And even adding the four feet on the back, that would still maintain five, at least five feet.
You're gonna be five feet, so you're not gonna move in at all on the back.
On that back, I would just move in on the neighbor's side.
Right, right, so I mean, so, because when I was talking, you know, you're gonna shift two and a half feet in, but you're not gonna shift in at all, so.
I would rather keep it straight on, pretty much straight on to the driveway.
You'd have plenty of clearance. Then you talked about a tree you would take down.
Yep, so the neighbor, his only concern was, there's a pine tree that is probably about ten feet from the property line.
Yeah.
And he was saying that if we, you know, put our frost wall in, we'd be digging up the roots on that side of the tree. And he was worried about the tree lean, then leaning towards his property, because it was weaker on our side. And so I said that I would pay to have the tree removed.
After this past winter, I think it would be more dangerous to your garage than.
Yeah.
I mean, the pine trees, oh.
Yeah.
So many pine trees snapped off this year. There was a whole year.
Yes.
Okay, so that would be, your proposal would be twenty by thirty-six and a, a five foot setback.
On the back, eight and a half on the front.
On the front, okay.
Which, which do you prefer?
I prefer what I submitted. But I do understand that a two and a half foot setback.
Yeah, it is pretty, I'm pretty good on setbacks, but two and a half, yeah, you gotta be.
And would you mind if we put in, on the record that you'll remove a tree?
Yep, I'll have it professionally removed, yep.
Before you're, based upon your abutters input.
Yep. Yep.
Very good.
And your neighbor's, is that your neighbor?
That's my dad.
Oh, I, oh, looks like your brother. Um, so this neighbor has no...
I mean, he came over and talked to me, and he said he wouldn't have an issue with it besides the worry of the tree leaning once the roots were cut.
I guess I'm gonna ask a snow question again, because I'm curious more than anything.
Yep.
Are you putting a metal roof on it?
I have not decided.
I've just, I've done a lot of observing on metal roofs this year. My daughter and her husband put one on their ranch house this year. And I was astounded by the amount of snow.
Yeah.
Comes off of those roofs and has a huge impact around the foundation and the windows of a home and how, if you don't clear that snow away, it just ends up... And I noticed your barn, Romeo, I think you still have snow on the side of your barn.
The, the, uh, the acceptable installation of a metal roof means that you put in what are called snow blocks.
Yeah.
And the guy that did the roof did an absolutely terrible job. I mean, I had leaks day one.
Really?
And he refused to come out and do any of the work.
Wow.
And suing somebody like a contractor is like trying to suck blood out of a rock.
Which is why they get away with everything.
You get nowhere.
And, and you know what, too, they're very dangerous. I've, because if you don't have the, like you've said, when those come, when it comes off of that roof...
It comes off.
It, it, there's ice.
Shakes the whole house.
It's an avalanche.
Yeah, very dangerous.
So, the idea is that you, on a metal roof, you put what are called snow blocks. And they keep the snow on the roof and it melts on the roof.
Because I was just curious with, especially with that.
With a, yeah.
That's short, that's small.
It's gonna be a hip roof or a, it's just a slanted roof? Hip roof being like this, or is it gonna be just going?
Uh, hip roof.
Hip roof, okay.
You're already mature, you, you might be a five-twelve, you didn't...
I'm not totally sure yet. Dale had said, we'll get into the building, you know, details if it gets approved.
Right.
Yeah, because you're probably, you're, you're five-foot, but the, um, overhang, you know, on the roof is usually part of the, I think that's part of the setback, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it is.
Yeah, so you might have to be pretty flat or, or kick it in a little, I don't know. You might have to still kick in a foot or something, but, I mean...
Yeah, because your setback does include that overhang, which is why...
On the roof, okay.
Which is why when we, we had a case recently where they were adding up and they had to come before us, even though they weren't changing the basic footprint, but because they were going up in a longer overhang.
Okay.
So that airspace, believe it or not, counts.
So your measure, the building would be measured from, not the wall, but where...
Correct.
A plumb line off that.
Where the soffit stops.
Right, where the soffit stops, yeah.
They drop a plum bob and...
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
All right, again, there's nobody to...
That's why you might wanna slip, just, you know, that's gotta up to you to slip it. You know, you could tilt it slightly, I know, I understand, but... Okay, is there any other questions? I'm gonna close the public hearing. No other questions? Okay, so I'm gonna oppose this hearing, and we're gonna open it up for a discussion amongst the board. Okay, you're all set?
I'm, I'm partial to the amended drawing.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Because he was thinking that the, the building, where the wall stops is the setback, but it really would be where the overhang is.
Yeah.
Which would, could bring it down to even a foot and a half, really a foot.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, yeah.
So if, with the amended drawing that he has of the, was it twenty by thirty-six or something?
Correct.
That would alleviate some of that problem.
Did you guys get to see that?
Kevin did see that.
Depending how steep he makes the roof with the snow will be on the neighbor's.
Yeah.
The neighbor's property, so...
Anything?
So are you good with, oh, sorry, we've already closed. I assume the applicant is good with five feet, including the overhang. And with that, I can make a motion. The board would allow.
Shall allow.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to make the motion for case number twenty-three dash double lot three for Zachary and Christine Cody, sixty-five State Road, to allow the, um, permit for the building of an attached garage with the amendment that the structure would be five feet from the property line where the zoning order states that the setback between property lines and accessory buildings should be twenty feet. Property is located at one sixty-five State Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire and identified as tax map number thirty-seven, lot eighteen. The applicant has indicated that the garage size would be changed to twenty feet by thirty-six feet and that, um, based upon an rebuttal's input, um, an adjacent tree, assuming it's on the rebuttal's property, would be taken down, um, for the purposes of, of future damage, um, um, reduction, uh, what am I trying to say? To avoid future damage on either property.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Let me try to read it. To approve the application for Zachary and Christine Cody requesting a variance from Article Two, Section C, Three A of the Nottingham Zoning Ordinance to permit, to permit a building of an unattached garage. Proposed, proposed structure would be five feet from the property line where the zoning states that the setback from the property line and it's...
I amend that to five and eight and a half. I think he showed on his diagram was five at one corner and eight and a half.
Right, yeah, that's true, yeah. We should do the eight and a half.
Well, Kevin, make the motion.
Yeah, it'll be, uh, a five-foot from the property line on the back edge of the garage.
Yep.
And eight and a half feet on the front edge of the garage. And that will be from the soffit. And, let's see, so, property line where the zoning ordinance states that the setback from the property and accessory buildings shall be twenty feet. And so he's gonna, he's agreed to build a twenty by thirty-six building reduced from twenty-four by thirty-two. And then he's gonna remove a tree, a pine tree near the back corner of the garage before he builds the garage.
Kevin, are you okay with the amendment adding the ex, the eight point five to your... Terry changed your original motion from just five feet to eight point five and by five.
As per the drawing.
Per the drawing, that the, okay. You're okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because you made the original motion.
And I agree to that.
Okay.
Just, just clarity.
Yeah, no, it makes sense. I mean, when Romeo said it, yeah, it makes sense to keep the eight and a half up in the front and not, not five feet along the whole property line, so... Okay, so, property is located at one sixty-five State Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire identified as tax map thirty-seven, lot eighteen. So we have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Will we keep his drawing of the backside of the, of the, of the different dimensions? And will he need a copy of it? Just a matter of formality.
Is that okay with you?
It's fine.
Okay, yes.
So we should keep that.
That's fine. Put it in your binder, Mr. Chairman.
That was a really rough, rough drawing.
That's okay.
We won't grade you on it. Okay, I think it was a good, good way to do it. Okay, um...
Appreciate the compromise.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Sorry you got put in that predicament because of the snafu in the lot line.
It's all right.
And remember, this thirty days...
Better to find it now than, uh...
Thirty, yep, yeah.
Thirty-day window for appeal.
We were thinking maybe September anyways, so...
Okay. It may take that long to get all the supplies. I don't know if, if supply lines are better now.
I think it's a little better, yeah. At least it's cheaper.
How can he get a copy of that?
From Alana or, yeah, whoever's working in the office.
You want a copy of this?
Yeah, sure. Will it be, will it be up?
Okay, so we'll give you it.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, if you don't stop by now and you come in for the building permit, you can ask for the copy.
Okay, that's fine.
Because it will be in your folder.
Okay.
Okay?
That works.
Putting in a ten-foot door?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Putting in a ten-foot door?
Ten-foot door, yeah.
Smart.
Yeah.
One, one big door.
Smart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Nice.
See you later.
Is that it?
Well, we have to do...
No public comment.
No public comment.
Did we already elect an office?
No, we're gonna do that now. Okay, are we gonna go to the election of offices now? Is that what you want?
Sure.
Okay.
Not our bylaws, either one.
Did we have the changes to the bylaws? We made a couple changes, but...
But they weren't made?
Right. That was when Kevin was leaving, I mean, not this Kevin.
I was gonna say, leaving?
The secretary, right?
Yes, yes.
So he was like, heading out and, yeah, so...
Yes.
It kinda got lost. And I don't think we had some meetings.
Correct.
We had some, you know, delays, so...
Yeah, we had changed...
What does that mean?
I'm not sure, we're gonna discuss the bylaws too much because, I mean, we could discuss them. What our changes were, do you have our changes?
I do. Uh, does everybody have the bylaws in their hands? Find them in your binder.
That's what this pink thing?
Does it say bylaws on it? Mine doesn't have a pink thing on it, so I can't help you with that.
Right, yeah.
Well, the pink thing is the one for everybody else.
Yep.
Okay.
You're the only odd one that doesn't have the pink.
I'm always the odd one.
She had hers, she picked hers up earlier.
I did, I did. On page one of the bylaws and rules of procedure at the bottom, where it says meetings, at number two, we had said a quorum for, a quorum for all meetings of the board shall be three elected members, not including alternates. We struck, struck out, including alternates sitting in place of regular board members.
That's a good...
I, I don't think I understand what you're saying.
All right, uh, we, where, it says just three members, including alternates sitting in place of regular members.
Right.
We struck that, including alternates sitting in place of regular members. And it has, has said that a quorum shall be three elected members. And I think that's actually a, um, a nod towards the fact that we have five elected board members and the public doesn't, not elect our alternates. Those are ones we, um, approve onto the board. So we were saying that it needs to be three elected members.
What's the value of an alternate, then?
Well, the value of the alternate is to sit in on, on your, on your meetings and make decisions, but a quorum should be of the elected board members. And then, like, when, tonight, Bonnie's not here, so he's, Kevin is, is in and seated for her.
Well, we could have opened the meeting, but we had three...
Correct, we already had three elected, but actually four, because you came right in.
Yeah, I...
I, I fail to understand why, if an alternate is seated...
Because you cannot op, you're supposed to...
You're supposed to open a meeting.
...without meeting with a quorum.
Of three members.
Of three members. And you, and then your alternate is seated by the chair. You can't open the meeting without the elected members.
All right, I got it now. Okay, thanks.
And this is, this is a change since we have gone to elected members. Many years ago, we weren't elected.
Oh, I've not been on the board since then.
Right, so, back then, none of us were elected. But now that there are elected members, there should be three elected members to be a quorum.
Well, and it has to be to open up the meeting, anyway.
Well...
Right, yep.
Right.
Because you can't conduct business.
We can't seat you until we open a meeting. We can't open a meeting until you see you.
Until, until three of us say that you can open a meeting.
Yeah, so it's...
Because I'm not elected, that it.
Well, that's because you cannot do business until you have three members.
I mean, you got five members, you should be able to get three elected board members, yeah, so... What was the other change?
The other change we had was on page two, at the, near the top, where it says, order of business. That is actually begin, going to become number five. And the area where it says ZBA members are strongly recommended to do a drive-by, we wanted to make a number four. Because it flowed, flowed better that way. See that? That was before public hearing, which is number six, which, I mean, number five, which would become number six.
Number six, that's right.
Okay, so this will become number six.
Yes, and ZBA members are strongly recommended to drive-by will be five...
Decision seven.
No, be four, and four becomes five. And then six becomes seven. Does that make sense?
Yep, yep, so this is gonna go under three, five's gonna come down, and then six, yep.
And for the ZBA members strongly recommended to drive-by, the last sentence is changed to read, can make a more fully informed decision, period. We were striking, that will not be contrary to public interest.
Okay, so take that out.
Does that still...
That's gonna be number four.
Correct.
Right.
And, so, are we just handwriting these, or are we gonna have them retyped?
They, they will be, uh, they have to be. They have to be amended, and then we get them into our binder.
So we're voting on this?
Correct. And that was the only cha, other change. That was it.
So, do we need a motion to accept?
Yes.
We had before already, but I guess we can do that again. No, 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 I'm talking about a year ago, and they never got made, so I guess we can do it again.
Yeah, we, we can do it again.
It doesn't hurt anything.
No.
I think that a motion goes stale if it's over a year old. Why don't you make the motion? Because you got, you got all the information, and I wouldn't want to miss it out.
I was gonna say the same thing.
I...
Sorry, but...
That's okay. I could just say, as, as we've been discussing, because it's all on recording, right? I move that we approve the changes to the bylaws and rules of procedure for the zoning board, as discussed here in the meeting.
I'll second, you're second, okay. Matthew seconds. You have a question, or are you, are you doing a third?
I was getting ready to move.
Oh, you were getting ready to move?
I thought that's what you were gonna do.
Takes him a while, you know? One of the arms.
I thought you were waving goodbye, I didn't know what you were doing. Okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve the changes in the bylaws. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're good.
Aye, seven.
Yep.
Aye, though.
Okay, now we're down to offices.
Have we done all the offices?
Nope, we gotta do them.
Okay.
Okay, now, I'm...
We're just going out of order, but that's your precedent.
What's that? Oh, yeah, no, we did. We went out of order a little bit.
Part of the reason we moved the election of officers by is that we weren't all here early enough to get into that, and they were all there waiting to have their cases heard.
If we, we were gonna do it in March, but then the elections got postponed, and then it shifted, so that pushes it to April, so we would have had all that done in the bylaws earlier.
Correct.
And, you know, we could have pushed those guys to 7:30 or something. Okay, so this is for election of officers. I'm gonna make a motion to, for Teresa to be the chair this year, so.
Second.
Okay. You all right with it?
I'm okay with that, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second for Teresa Bascom to be the chair this year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
And...
We need a motion for vice chair?
Vice chair. Anybody, I move for Terry Bonzer to be vice chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So you are chair.
So we're swapping.
Yeah.
All right.
As my wife was saying, the vote was anonymous.
Anonymous.
Victoria, that's unanimous.
All right, so then we have minutes from February 21st, 2023. Did everybody look these over? Anything on them? My only request is that I please be referred to as Mrs. Bascom and not Ms. Bascom in minutes and correspondence. That's just a quirk I have, I guess. Did anybody else have anything on the minutes?
Oh, dear.
But you can read them over, didn't see anything, all right. I would entertain a motion to approve if there's nothing.
I'll make a motion we approve the minutes, February...
Twenty-one.
February 21, 2023.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Kathy. All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes of February 20, 21, excuse me, February 21 of 2023, with just that little change in the Ms. to Mrs. Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstains?
Abstained.
Two abstentions, so it's three, two, three, zero, two. All right. Anything else, any other business, any other cases coming up? There are, okay. Are those, have those already been posted to the site, or do you not have any? Just preliminary right now? Okay.
How many words, how many?
No, no, we just have the next two.
Okay.
All right.
Could you do me a favor? Have seen when my three years is yours. This is yours, huh?
Yes, this is mine.
I should have checked, but I didn't. I think I got another year.
Didn't help.
And it's usually around this time.
Yes, we were discussing that earlier, trying to decide if you needed to be reapproved by the board or not. It is a term of three years, but I don't know when it started.
We did it last year, I think, for you, didn't we? Did we do it last year for you?
Time flies, Terry, but just let her check it.
Yes, if you could do that, that'd be great, thank you.
But we had this discussion last year, I think.
Time flies, Terry.
You say so.
That mustache has been great for nothing.
Does anybody have anything for the board? I highly recommend, I will tell you all, I highly recommend you look at the NHMA website and look over what the changes are in our manuals that we've been given. Because there are several, and one of the bigger ones, and I think we covered it all pretty well today with our fact finding on the, it was listed in the decisions, but we did talk about those quite well. And that, for the solar panel and the, and the structure of the garage. But...
Is there a point to that info that you just described?
A point to it? Yes, we have to by law in our decisions state a finding of facts in the posting of the notices.
It seemed to be more denial.
It's more, it is more important with the denials. It has to be there with denials for sure, because it can be overturned otherwise, but it states in the land use regulation that it's... Could also be there.
We've done this in the past.
We used to, and that was the other thing they talk about, you need to choose a voting procedure and stick to it. Because at one point, we had shifted to voting based on the five criteria. And then we got away from that again and went to just the straight voting on the motion, but we have to pick one or the other and go by that.
And at one time, we had to fill out.
Correct.
Why we voted yes and why we voted no.
Correct.
So what are we going to do?
That was when we were challenged on the, on the fernal property vote for the propane tanks, remember? The town sued us for the way we voted, and then they wanted us to document everything in writing. Do you remember? I think you were sitting at that time.
Perhaps. I don't have full...
The last case we had, the one was on the lake, was the last one we had, it was, got appealed.
It's still in court, isn't it? Have you heard anything on that, the Water Cross?
Oh, that's down and over.
Oh.
It went to court.
No, did he go up to Supreme Court?
Yes, they did.
Oh, I didn't realize he went to Supreme Court. I didn't, I never got any notice.
That guy on the snowmobiles on the lake, on the pond.
But he went to the Superior Court, and then he appealed that to the Supreme Court?
Well, he didn't, because we approved it. It was the Butters that appealed it.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, it went to Superior Court, and it got, they won there.
And it was appealed again.
To the Supreme Court, okay.
Correct.
Because he did, he did, he did that motion for reconsideration, and that's usually what you have to do before you go appeal.
Correct.
I'd never heard of appeals.
And I don't remember the name, the number of the case, but it was the Water Cross for the Nottingham Sand and Gravel. If you could look into what is going on with that case, there should be some, Ellen actually might be able to have, be able to put her fingers on something, because I know that, oh, his name has slipped my tired mind. Who was our last TA that we had?
What are you talking?
Our town administrator.
Oh, Chris Sterndale.
Chris Sterndale. Wow, that just went... Chris was getting updates on that for a while, and then, of course, he's gone, and I'd never heard anything from the other guy we had.
Yeah, I didn't even know they appealed, so.
Yes, they did. Mm-hmm.
Why'd you hear that?
Okay, back to what we first talked about.
You were on the planning board.
You were talking about changes in there. You said, go look somewhere.
Go look somewhere?
To see what the changes are.
I, yes, the NHMA, actually...
Can you send us a...
Alana, Alana had... Yes.
Send us a, you already did?
Yes, she did.
I did email it, it's a link in an email, but I can resend it.
Just make it very clear.
Say, Kevin, please look at this. Yes, no, I agree.
That would be appreciated, because...
Yes.
Because either I did or I didn't, and I didn't know what, what maybe I was supposed to do.
Yes.
This here, is this part of that?
Yes.
Okay. And all I was asking for is, did I get this?
No.
No, I had to go there to get this.
Correct. So what I wanna say of that is, because it looks like it's...
I didn't think you were done.
Because it looks like it's an invitation to another one of their Zoom-type meetings. But if you go down and look at the February 26, I believe it is, information session they had, it's on the land use reg book. There's one for planning board, and there's one for zoning, and it covers the changes in here. So it's actually pretty good, just go, and you can look at just the slides, which is what I, what I did.
Okay.
Okay, or you can listen to the whole thing if you so choose.
Previous comment to that is our voting technique.
Going to change.
What are we going to do, and since you're the chair?
We need to discuss that as a committee, what we want to do. It isn't just...
When is our chair going to do that with us?
Well, it's only 8:20. Why don't we talk about it now? Because it's not, the time is not to decide it when we have cases before us. So how do you want our votes to go? Continue as we've been this time, or is there...
Are we talking about Roberts' rules as opposed to Mason's rules?
No, just voting on it. We used to do the five criteria, we voted.
Correct.
But we ought to at least establish the options first. In other words...
Which?
A clear vote on all five criteria, or an individual vote on all five, or, and, you know, just lay out the options, then we can discuss which is the best for us. That's my suggestion.
Okay.
So I don't know what all the options are.
Well, you just basically stated, you stated two, and the only other one is to just go through the case and then discuss what we, how we wanna vote, either approval or a rejection.
I think, I think for clarification, it'd be good to vote on the entire matter. It's if you start voting on each of the different subparcels, you might have a difference of opinion on the votes, and now we're gonna have to balance them off, get sticky and messy.
Well, you're gonna...
And vote on the entire application.
Right, because you get the entire application. If you don't think it meets one criteria, you're gonna vote no anyway, so that's it, so. And you might state that and say, I vote on that because I don't think it meets this criteria, and, you know, but other than that, it's gonna be a yes or no on the entire motion, like you said. It is easier, because we did the criteria, it was like...
I agree. I think if you do each individual five, you're gonna just draw it out and get very lengthy.
It did.
It did, it did, and documenting them, maybe each of us, one of us was really frustrating.
We were writing encyclopedias.
What did that say about denials?
For denials, you have to specify why you're saying no.
Was that on an individual, us individually, or if we deny it as a group, do we need to do it, or both?
It needs to be written in what gets the notice of decision that is posted.
So that's as a group, as a board?
Correct.
If we deny it?
Correct.
Then we need to state why.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted everyone to hear it.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
So that we do it.
Correct, yes, absolutely.
Would that be done as a motion to deny, or would it be a motion to approve, however, the votes, the ayes failed? So it could go either way. I mean, which, but which way are we doing it?
I think it's either. I mean, someone could say, I could, I could make a motion to approve, but then the board does not approve it.
Right.
And then the board still has to say why.
Right.
Would you make a motion?
That's my opinion.
Would you make a motion to deny?
And then someone says, make a motion to deny, the board could say, approve, because it's only one person who's making that motion, for instance. So, and then you don't have to say why.
The ultimate thing is, if, if somebody comes before us for a variance, and we deny their request for the variance, we have to tell them exactly why we're denying it. And if we...
Because it didn't meet criteria number three, blah, 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 right? It has to be that specific, I would think.
It has to be that specific, yes.
Yeah, the question I have, though, is that it does say the board should always enlist their town council to aid in the issuance of the findings of fact. So is that on every single denial? Does town council look over?
Or... That I don't...
Can I read what you just said? I just wanna...
We don't have town council available at our meetings like the planning board does. That makes a big difference for us, and I think part of that may be leaning towards that, that planning board thing. Don't you think so, Alana?
He's a planner, he's not a town council.
Oh, that is true. We used to have the TA appear, or, excuse me, a council appear, and you can, we can at any point in time, if we, if we have something that we're not, well, and if we, if we see something during a case that we're like, I'm not comfortable about this, let's seek counsel on it, we can do that, and then just continue the case to the next meeting.
Yeah, we've done that a few times.
Counsel, right.
Okay, so it's, it's not a standard practice, doesn't necessarily have to happen on every denial?
No, but you wanna be sure if you're denying a case that you've actually got a good reason for denying it. Not just smilly-nilly, like, no, I don't like that idea.
And you're gonna get more appeals on denials than approvals.
Usually.
Usually, yeah, usually.
Usually.
Not necessarily.
Exactly.
Not necessarily, but it does...
Not when they're driving snowmobiles across water.
Anybody else have anything for tonight? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
So, did we vote on, did we vote on how we were gonna...
Thank you, I'm sorry. I appreciate you catching me on that. All right, do I wanna hear a motion for our voting method?
Yes, I just don't know how to say it. I make a motion to approve the way that we vote in by continuing the way that we have been and not doing the individual, the five criteria.
Right, just voting on the motion.
Just voting on the motion.
Voting on the case as a case, okay.
As a case as a whole.
Yeah. Thank you.
Voting on, on the case as a whole.
All right, I'll second that.
Okay, there is a motion to continue our votes as we have by voting on the case as a whole, and it's been seconded by Romeo. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? No, it's unanimous, all right, five, zero. All right, now, anything else? Motion to adjourn.
All right, make a motion we adjourn.
I second. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, we're done. Thank you, everybody.